Hi, hello everyone and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. We're joined by our entire team here today who are currently in what the the direct path of some kind of awful snowstorm. Right? Are you in snowpocalypse? Is that what we were just talking about?
Yep, somewhere between, I don't know, six and 22 inches or so. I don't know, it changes every hour, but yeah.
Oh, boy.
Who knows?
You guys bundle up and stay safe as you're coming in, everybody. Let us know where you're coming in from. You got snow coming your way as well. It feels a little early for that, but then I am, I'm a native Southerner, so. So all that's just kind of weird to me. Anywho, this, if you guys are joining us for the first time, our weekly work session is open to anyone building a business with Young Living. We, Get Oiling, provide tools and training to help you take your business to the next level. And today, we are going to be talking about taking your events online. We started this discussion last week. And if you were with us, you saw the complete walkthrough inside of an actual member's account of how to set yourself up for an online event. And today, we're going to take that work that we did and turn it into an evergreen tool for you to use to share your business. But we got a little announcement to make first, or actually, it's kind of big and a couple of them, we're going to make those first. So we'll let you guys, team, go for it.
Sure. I have them up on my screen. If I can certainly share them. Melissa, man, do you want to do that? But I can go ahead and share.
Yep, go ahead.
Let everybody know what it is?
Yes, here it is. So we've got the holiday catalog on our website now, at least for the US and Australia. We're keeping an eye out for the Canadian version and, you know, others as we're, you know, as we come up, become aware of them. But in the US, of course, they call it, call it the holiday catalog. It's a new section on your learn menu. If you're using a built-in theme, of course. There's a holiday catalog in your learn menu. You can see little ways down there below the starter kits. If you're in Australia, then they call it the Christmas catalog, which is kind of cool. So and it all links off to the specific catalog. You click on there and your, your visitors can browse through and, and see all the fun stuff they've got this year. So yeah, that's, that is it. Fun little share to start off with.
And so if you are a Get Oiling member right now in the US or Australia, then you get to go use this right now, right? Or if you have members, you can use that version of the site, right?
Yep.
Very cool. So it's already embedded for the sharing. Fantastic. All right. So while we're here, before we get started on sort of walking through the slides and stuff, anybody here with us today have a request to work together hands-on? If not, I've got the account that we were using last week. Diane had offered hers up for this purpose, so we will continue with that. But if you are working on this, then you have an opportunity to get live help here today. So feel free to put a request in the Q and A box for us so that we know and can, can work with you. Looks like we actually just got one come through. Hi Suzanne. All right, fantastic. All right, so you're, you're up to the broadcast. All right, fantastic. You've been going through. Also have a gold star, another, another one of our members who is not able to come on. She's usually work during our, our weekly work sessions. But Paula, we're going to show you some of the work that she's been doing as well. So fantastic. Let's, uh, let's get on with the sharing. And then Suzanne, once I walk through these steps, we'll bring you on and we can talk about any questions you might have. All right, so I want to first go over to here. All right, so can, can you see my screen? Are you, are you seeing the, the Get Oiling dashboard here?
It's just black, Ashley.
Huh?
Yeah, mine says you've started it, but nothing's shown up yet, so.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm, that is, that is really strange. Zoom is not allowing me to share Safari. That is, well, okay, well, let's, let's try one other thing here. Um, yeah, all of this says unknown. This is really strange. Um, tell you what, I'm going to restart this apps. All right, it's sharing my whole screen now, right?
Yeah, I see some mountains.
Yes. All right. Oh, oh, here we go. Open, forgive me, I'm going to stop my share here real quick. I recently, my computer updated and I need to later, okay, maybe that'll work. All right. So worst case, we're just going to share my whole screen. All right, let's try this one more time. All right, yeah, that's, that's going to work. Okay. Okay, perfect. This should work. See it now?
There it is.
Yes, all right, fantastic. All right, perfect. So I'm logged into Diane's account right now. And I just want to remind you of the work that we did last week. For those of you who are following along with the steps. Basically, what we did was we took the event that you would hold and we put it in to Get Oiling. And so what that looks like, if we go over to our manage page in Diane's account, is we created this simple, safe solutions to calm happy children. And of course, we, we set this up as, you know, sort of a test. She's not doing this yet or promoting it, but let me show you what that looks like.
Quick request, would you be able to like shrink the height of your screen? I think that'll make it a little bit bigger.
Absolutely.
Another screen, but the window.
Yeah, yeah. I was curious about that, actually. All right. Is this better?
Um, no, sorry, like the width was fine, but like height wise. It looks like it got narrower. There we go. Okay.
Okay, better?
Although, yeah, although it looks like it's not showing the whole thing.
Yeah, yeah. Tell you what, here's what I'll do.
This is a good size. So yeah, if you just shrink or zoom back out a little bit in your browser, I think it should be fine. Yeah, that's, I think it's pretty good.
All right, awesome. So, um, yeah, and this is something you guys as well, from last week, there's a recording of this. If you want to go through and, you know, see where all of this came from. But just to sort of recap, we used our friends over at Grow Workspace. They had a bundle that teaches KidSense. And all of the descriptions, the class, everything was already made by them. And so we borrowed all of the cool stuff that they made, including their images, and plugged them in to, to a couple of features inside of Get Oiling. And well, actually a handful. It was a pretty long training last week. So again, if you want to catch up, definitely watch that first recording and, and download the guide that goes along with it. If you're here with us today, then you definitely received that in your email. And that has a checklist for you step by step for what you need to do. So when you register, you then get a campaign. That was another thing that we set up. So, simple, safe solutions to calm happy children. We have the post-event and the pre-event campaigns. Those are made. And the post-event, that's where we actually drip out information, again, copied pictures and the descriptions and words and stuff like that from each section of the Grow Workspace content. So all of this stuff Chrissy over at Grow Workspace made, and here it is for you guys, right? All right, so there was that, and that's more or less the bulk of it, right? So we had a follow-up plan and everything that was connected to that. Now, the, the final part of your, your step-by-step process for creating your event system online with Get Oiling was to actually have your event in Zoom meetings, right? So what you then would have done is come over here and on this date, you start the meeting. You record yourself going through the slides using the script that they provide if you choose, and you record that. So you have a video. Now, I want to move along and I'm actually going to show you our step-by-step guide that I sent you, and we're going to walk through this step-by-step to show you exactly what the steps are we're going to follow to get this thing done. All right, so you should be able to see this. Can you read it? Okay? Can we see it? Okay?
It's a little tiny, but yeah, it's there.
All right, I'm going to zoom in a little bit. All right, so you have received by email the online class guide, right? So step one is going to be taking that online event recording that you had, right? So where you went through the slides and you recorded your voice going through the slides. Or however, if you prefer to do your classes differently, you like to hold up the oil and just riff and talk, up to you. However, you prefer to do this, but take that recording and then you're going to put that into YouTube or Vimeo or Wistia, right? So you need to put it into a video hosting service. It's a pretty straightforward process. If you go to any of those websites, they're going to tell you and show you exactly what to do. The free option, of course, is using YouTube. If you do this, make the video unlisted, so it doesn't just show up on your YouTube channel. The reason you want to do this is because you're going to be putting this video on the other side of a landing page. And if the video is just available to the whole world to see on YouTube, why would they give you their email in order to see it, right? So make it unlisted, or the preferable option is to use a paid service like Vimeo or Wistia, where you can actually control whether or not a video can be embedded or shared, or whether, you know, keep playing videos show up after it's done, after they finish seeing the recording. So I recommend using one of those services. So once you have that, what you're going to do is you're going to create a live event video playback page, all right? So basically, all this is, is a custom page inside of Get Oiling, where they're going to see a brief message from you. They're going to see a video that they can hit play on, and then optionally, they can have some kind of a button underneath the video to either contact you or to click off to go buy their starter kit, okay? So that's the first thing that we're going to show you how to do. And then we are going to connect that together with a campaign and a landing page so that you are able to go and share a landing page where someone enters their name and email. And then on the next page, they see that video recording that you've made, that presentation that you already did, that live event that you recorded, right? And then they get a drip of emails talking about the things that you've covered in the video, all right? That's that full loop there, using all of the stuff that you already did to prepare for your live event. This is how you take all of that work that goes into creating a live event and have it continue working for you over and over and over again into the future. All right. So now you see that, and of course, we'll reference these steps as we're going. I just wanted to show you guys where we're at. So going back to this page, there we go. The first step that we're going to do is to create our live video event playback page. So what we're going to do is we're going to come over here to my site settings and go to custom pages. Now, I have already made this for you, but I want to show you what I used to do it. So when you hit create page, and this is included in the instructions that have been given to you in, in your guide. I used this professional services template right here. It's the easiest one to use for this purpose. If you want to use a video, it's already formatted perfectly for a video. So you're going to click that. You're going to change this little thing up here. So say, click the video below or click play below and learn whatever you want to say here. And then on this video, you're going to select, or this picture, you're going to select it, delete it, hit enter a couple of times. If you're using an embed code, then you would, actually, I don't see the, I don't see that here. So what you'll do is you'll hit, oh, there we go. You'll hit insert video and either, you can either use an embed code, which you can copy from something like Vimeo, or if you're using any video hosting service, just paste the link in here and it'll populate the video, okay? I'm going to show you what that looks like here in just a second. So then you hit insert and you're done. Change your call to action here, say, ready to get your kit, right? And then you can say, click here now. Change the, the text here, click here now. And then you would change the, the link on this. All right, now what you want to do, obviously, I'm, I'm going to be showing you what this looks like on a second page. But with the, the rest of the stuff that's in this theme, just hit this little trash can so we can make this really simple. So just hit those and that's it. Have your video here, have this here. And then I'm going to show you on this page that I've already done exactly how this thing is set up, all right? So press play now to start the class. And this is an actual video, you guys, that, that I recorded. It took about, you know, just under 20 minutes. I used the script from Grow Workspace. I used the slides from Grow Workspace, end to end, about 20 minutes long. Not a bad length of time for someone to sit through a class and actually pay attention, right? So this says, got questions, ready to get your kit? Click the button below. Now, let's set up a call. All right, let's see what this looks like in real time. All right, so you can hit play. And it plays, or they could click below the video when they're done. And this is the fun part. When you hit this, there's Diane, right? So I'm going to show you guys a really cool trick to where you can actually have people contact you directly after watching the video. So like I mentioned just a couple of minutes ago, you change the copy up here, which is the title, to whatever it is that you want to say. So press play now to start the class. If press play, got questions, ready to get your kit? Click the button below. Now, let's set up a call. All you have to do, and there is no magic trick here. There's, there's nothing crazy that you have to do to get this done. All you have to do is edit the link, right? And that's this guy right here, okay? Click him. And all you have to do is hashtag is already going to be there. All you have to do is have that hashtag and have it say contact. All right, now, if you wanted to point off to, you know, the starter page, right, the, the starter kit page, then you would click that link and you would put a web address in here. And I would, I always say, open a new tab when you're going to a different page entirely. So that's an option as well. Highly recommend, though, that you just go ahead and set it up with that hashtag contact.
All right, a quick tip for putting the Young Living Starter Kit signup, the membership signup there. Whatever it is, your website address, if it's a domain name, let's say it's yourdomainname.com, or if it's getoiling.com/ something. All you have to do is add slash start to the end of that, and that will be, that will take them right to the membership signup page. So that could be the link you could use there if you wanted to. So in this case, I don't remember Diane's web address.
Try this.
Oh, yeah, so it'd be, yeah, dianeracina wellness.com/start. And that should take you right to the Young Living page for the membership signup.
All right, here, let's, let's, let's give that a try. That's a great idea. Especially if you're going to be on the phone or you're long distance with someone and you're actually walking them through this process. You know, you could just literally have them after they watch the video, you talk about their questions, and then you say, okay, click the button below. Let's get you started. So I'm going to update that. And let's, uh, let's check that out. Wait a minute. Yep, there it is.
Just open a new tab, yeah.
Yeah, woo, very cool. Okay, so now you know two great options, uh, once they have seen this class. So now what you want to do is go up here to settings. Now, since we aren't using this as a landing page, you can ignore the stuff down here, okay? I want you to make sure that this is by link only. And I like to, I like to take these two out of the equation because I don't want to provide opportunity for people to get distracted and start clicking through and seeing other things. When you are making a presentation, you want people to not be distracted, right? So I remove these two and then just make sure it's published, okay? So just to kind of zoom in, I know my screen is enormous. By link only, published, that's it, okay? And then you want to make sure that you've given it a name, right? So this is KidSense class. You can name this what you want to, but if you hover over, it'll, it'll tell you what they'll see. So this is your internal name for it, not shown to visitors. Title bar text, this will show up here in the top of the page. And then, of course, this is the URL link at the end, all right? So we hit done, we hit save, and now we have a video playback page, all right? Now, going back over to our guide, our second step is to create a campaign. Now, before you go, oh, God, that's so much work, we're actually going to use a little cheat code here. So when you go to settings, you go to campaigns, what I want you to do is grab your post-event campaign link right here, scoot over just a little bit to the side. This little guy with the two pages, copy to a new campaign, okay? And what we're going to do is, let's see, did I give a recommendation? Rename it in keeping with the theme is what I said. So, um, simple, so I'm going to, I'm just going to call this KidSense Post Video Campaign, all right? So after somebody has watched, they've received the KidSense video playback page, they are now going to get dripped on with these emails, okay? So that's the name. So I hit okay. There it is. Now, we're going to take this campaign that we've copied and we're going to edit it if we need to. So the campaign that you created in step one in last week's training, you may need to go through and make sure that none of these emails have dates and times referenced in them because this is something that you want to be able to send and share over and over and over again. So make sure that these are evergreen in that way. And then there's one more thing that we want to do. We want to include that video playback page, remember that? And actually, I should have done that. I'm going to grab a new tab here. I'm going to go back over to my site settings and custom pages and grab that video playback link because we're going to use that. So when you want to do that, find that page over here on view. You can either click it and then copy the link that pops up, or you could just do the double click on it or the two finger clip, click, and then hit copy link, right? So I'm going to go back over to my campaigns here. And on our day zero, if you are referencing your downloadable guide here, our day zero email needs to include a link to the video playback page, the downloadable gift if you used it in, for your first event. And then, of course, you keep that drip series in place, which is what these things are, okay? So we've already done this work. Now, we're going to edit this day zero. So, hey, contact first name. Thank you for attending the class. Did you learn something new? I'm excited to hear about what you found most surprising or impactful. Here, reply now and let me know. This is actually perfectly fine in terms of evergreen, but what I would put here is miss the class. Here's the recording. Now, here's the recording. We're going to take that link that I just copied. I'm going to hit insert link right here. Paste it. Hit open a new tab and insert. And now they've got that. And we also want to add that little free gift, right? So we did use one for the last, for our live version of the event. Here is your free gift in case you missed it. So I'm going to copy this, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to insert a file. See, I've already uploaded it, so I'm just going to hit right here while I have this text highlighted, right? This is really cool. So hit insert or manage files. Here is our KidSense principal. That's the downloadable. But you see what just happened here? The name of the file showed up. No worries. Click it, hit edit. Change the text. Here is your free gift. Open a new tab. Perfect. Okay, so now you have your day zero email. We can check all those things off. We've got the video playback page right there, and we've got the downloadable. So now your campaign's done. Just hit save. Remember the name of your campaign, KidSense Post Video Campaign, because we're going to need to use this on our next step, which is to create our landing page. And if you don't have the link ready and on hand to that video playback page, do make sure you have that handy because we'll need that as well. The landing page is what ties it all together. So here is, let's see, I don't know if this is one that I made already. Oh, yeah, I made this one already. This is a fun one. So, do you know what's in your kids' products? You might be floored at what you discover. Enter your name and email to watch my free class and learn how you can remove the guesswork of supporting the lifelong well-being of your precious kiddos with a single line of products, all right? So this is actually the page that I've already created. I'm going to go back over to landing pages page, and if I'm recalling correctly, this is blank style nine. We like using that one. So we hit create and click the image here and change it to the one that you want to use. So we're going to hit replace, which is this guy right here. We're going to, huh. Hang on a second. Oops. I want that other menu and it's not showing up for me.
You could probably delete the image too, and then just reinsert.
There we go.
It looks like it's getting hidden at the top of the screen.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, perfect. So there's some funny baby. Okay, so I put him in here and then I changed the sky. Guys, this is really simple. And you can borrow a lot of the language that's already in. If you're using Grow Workspace, like we have here, you can say, do you? What's going on with my keyboard here? Crazy, crazy. Oh, I know what's happening. Second, I still had my, the photo over there selected. Do you know what's in your kids' products, right? And so you can change the text around here, make it bold, change the font, make it bigger, however you like. The best, best way to use this is definitely keeping this short and sweet and very relevant and to the point for the person that you're talking to. So just like the example that I just showed you that we'll return to, that, that's kind of some of the best practice. Don't put too much information here, but definitely have enough for them to want to know what's on the other side. And then when you go to settings, what you're going to do right up here is you're going to go to page settings and you're going to give it a name. We're going to call this KidSense. Um, this would be the video playback, right? This could be, you want to change the link path name, so it's not the same as this, because that's what they're going to see. What's in your kids' products? All right, now you remember that campaign that we just made? KidSense Post Video Campaign. Add that right there. Tags KidSense. All right, add any more that you would like here. You do not have to show a message after registration. You certainly can. And then, right down here, after registration, redirect visitor to your video playback page. Okay, and then you hit done, you hit save, and then you're good to go. I want to go back over to the page that I created already so that you can see what, what we've done there. All right, so that goes straight on over to that video playback page. There's nothing here. You don't have to have anything here. Add the tag campaigns to use, right? Pretty simple. Save, and let's do it. This is actually our final step. This is cross-check, right? So this is register on your landing page. Make sure that you are redirected to the video. And then make sure that you are getting that initial email. So I'm going to opt in here. There we go. So now, what you can do is go back over here. When you hit view, this is the page that you are going to start sharing. This is what you are going to go out into the world to share. So if you have a prospect who says, yes, I'd love to learn more, or if you're inviting someone to a local online or a local class in person, or if you're inviting someone to a live online class, and they can't make either of those, say, okay, do you have 20 minutes right now? Send them this link. Have them click play on this video, collect their questions, provide the answers and get them started. And that's it. Pretty exciting stuff. So I want to open the floor up for questions. I also, as we start looking at these questions, and Suzanne, definitely, if there's any particular specific help that you would like, let us know because you're here and we want to be able to bring you out and work with you in that way. While we're going through the Q and A and, you know, folks start engaging in that way, I do want to bring up another member's page and show you guys what she's done, because she's done an exceptional job as well. And I think we had.
We have one question, looks like from Gwen. Um, do you worry about the campaign continuing to go out to someone who decides to buy a kit that day after watching the video?
Well, in this case, the, the campaign that we're dripping out is educational. So what, what we used for the, using the Grow Workspace content, this wasn't, it's not pushing a buy this, buy this. It's actually sort of a reiteration of what's already been taught in the class. So this would mean that they're getting product education in your email, and they can always opt out. So this would mean that they're getting product education in your email and they can always opt out. You know, if most people aren't offended by continuing, continuing to get emails. And of course, they always have that option to. To disengage from them by unsubscribing, or you could, once you've got someone who is, who has signed up, you could take them off of the campaign. Alright.
And then there's another one here. What would be the best way to advertise this for a person and online class? For in person and online class?
Okay, so, so with last week's training, you would have for. And for an online or in person class, you have your event page that you've created. That still uses the emails that nurture and follow up and teach to the folks who show up and who don't. And then, of course, you would have them RSVP, just like you would for, like if you use Facebook or Eventbrite. You would use your Get Oiling event system. So in terms of how you promote it, you would. Use those same steps that we followed last week. And instead of having this be a Zoom, it would just be a live meeting. If you do that, I highly recommend if you are doing live events, especially if they're topic based. That you have a friend record you doing the presentation in the class so that you could use that video in this. In this style that we're sharing with you today. Let's see Suzanne says, so the live class isn't actually live then if it is recorded first. Okay, no. So, so the distinction here Suzanne is last week we were talking about. Creating a live online event. So when you have that live online event, you are actually doing this live. When you are putting the recording onto a custom page like we just shared and having that put behind the landing page. That then becomes a pre-recorded thing that you can share with folks who can't make it to something live. So the live already happened in this instance. So this means you will have already done your class. And you can share this link now with anyone. Gwen asks how you can remove someone from a campaign. Greg, can you break that one down for us?
Yeah, absolutely. Removing from someone from a campaign, I probably could just show you. Let me share up my screen here, but. The gist of it is you go to your contact manager and then find the campaign on them and hit delete. I'll show you that here as soon as I. Pull up something. Okay, so I got something here. Let me share. Here we go. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, so I just found a contact. I just hit find typed in my name. It's popped up. You scroll down here. Here's a list of all the campaigns that they're in. To remove them from a campaign, just click on one of them. It'll pop up a box, hit delete and then hit okay, and then they'll be gone off that campaign. So yeah, if you do have that concern, you can. Take them off with a couple of clicks.
Awesome. Thank you. Alright, so I, we, I got an email from Paula this week. Who wanted me to review. Some materials that she had created and I have just gotten into her account here and let me see. I'm going to go ahead and share and show you guys what she made so we can all celebrate Paula putting this into action. Alright, here we go. So can, can you see it? Okay?
Looks great.
Perfect. Yeah, she's actually got custom font here, which is a really fun feature that is a relatively new feature inside of Get Oiling. Where you can actually change not just the font. So when you're, you know, when you're typing a message or creating a page, you can use lots of different types of font, but you could also apply. Styles of font to your entire website, which is what Paula has done here. She also made her own little image here. Which is really nice. Alright, so she did use, she is a Grow Workspace and Get Oiling member as well. So she used their, the same bundle that she had access to to create the same online class. So she has, she's actually got this, this coming up next Saturday. It's an online class and it will be recorded. You get a bonus. She has a free giveaway guide, which is the same PDF that Grow Workspace has already in that bundle. So we use that. And she has a giveaway. So when you hit register, I'm going to go ahead and do this. Wait, no, that's, that's not where I am. Where is it? There we go. Okay. Alright, so I'm registering for the event. And it confirms that I'm registered. Now Paula wanted me to make some recommendations for her. And actually Greg, can you clarify for me on this? When someone registers for an event, can you redirect? Is that, is that?
That's not an option right now.
Okay, cool, cool, cool.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, so. Let me see. I don't have the email just yet, but sometimes that can take a second. Now I want to go over and check out the campaigns that she's created. Alright Paula, I'm going to go into your campaigns. She has done a lot of classes. This is so cool. Here we go. Simple Safe Solutions. That's the one. She's got a welcome. And this is for the online event. So she is, she is up to, up to date with last week's training. So she has her first email here. And I did just get the confirmation email that I'm reading for you right now. Just arrived in my mailbox. So click this link. To access the class live. So she actually has the Zoom link in there like we explained last week. She talks about what she's going to cover, that there's going to be a giveaway, virtual class will be recorded. Paula, really, really great use of information here as well as bolding. And coloring your text to break up the sort of inline flow to get people reading. This is a copywriting tip that works. You have to interrupt attention and in changing colors and weight of fonts will do that. Alright, so she also has the guide and I'm actually going to open this link in a new window because I am. Not on that page. And there it is. This is the PDF guide created by Grow Workspace. This is a giveaway. And I'm pretty sure that their bundles you, you get in all of. In all of their bundles, you have something to that effect. I think they all basically have the same stuff, same types of stuff, just for different topics. So yeah, this is great. Very, very, very good. I think she also went ahead and created a landing page. Let's see, yep. There we go. This is great. So this is actually going to be the one that she uses for her recording. And I think she's done this already. I think she actually worked ahead and knew what the next steps were. And I am, oops, I am really impressed. So here's our page settings. We don't have the redirect here yet. Okay, so we're going to figure out where that is and get this linked up. What she's got here is she's got her campaign attached. That's fantastic. The only thing that we need to change here for Paula is to make sure that this landing page will go to the video, which I know she's already recorded because she sent it to me. This is so exciting. Alright, so let's go look and see. If she has a custom page with that. There. Does not look like it. However, I think I have an email from her. Her video. Yep, there it is. Alright, I am actually Paula, I'm going to, I'm going to make this for you right now. Click the, let's see, click. Play now to watch the video. Okay. Oops. Insert video. There's the URL. Should work.
Oh, that's a direct link to a file.
Okay, because since it's not embedded, I see. That's what it was. Alright, so Paula, what you'll need to do, and I'm going to have this already set up for you. Alright. Embed video. Alright. We're going to make this look just like the other one or perform like it anyway. Schedule a call with me. Alright, you remember what we did here? We hit edit link and instead of lead, we said contact. Actually, do not open a new tab if you do that. Alright, so hit update. Let's see, so want to learn more, ready to get your kit. Schedule a call with me. Alright, going to hit save, which means we need to. Change the name here. So this would be the kids since. Video replay. Okay, by link only. Published. And save. Now I'm going to grab this link, which she doesn't have her video in here yet, but she can do that when she gets home from work today and then she'll have a complete funnel to share. And where do we go? Alright, so we're going to go back to. Where was I? Alright, I'm going to reload this here. Alright, so I'm back in Paula's account. Alright, so now that we have that page, all we have to do is go back to our landing page here. And then we're going to go to our kids since landing page. We're going to go to settings, page background, page background. So that's not what I want. I want page settings. And then scroll down after registration redirect the visitor to the video replay. And hit save. And then there was one more thing we needed to do because we are doing this out of order. We need to go and make sure that we are linking to that video replay in our campaign. Okay, so let's go back and find in her prolific campaign writing. So impressed. Alright, where did it go? Am I missing it?
Due to the command F thing?
That's a good idea. Here we go. Simple Safe Solutions. Yep. Alright, Simple Safe Solutions. There it is. Oh wait, that's, that's a different one. I think she has one for after. So I don't want to go in and mess up Paula's campaigns right now. She obviously has a lot of them. Paula, if you have a replay. Message, which you should in your follow up sequence for the, the post. Not the post event, but basically following and keeping with the training we did today, make sure that you are attaching the replay link in email. So even if you redirect someone. After they, I'm going to stop my sharing because I'm basically done with that for now. If you want to redirect someone. From a landing page and then they go immediately to that video, that's obviously an ideal thing to do because they say, yes, I want to watch the video. So you want to give them the video right now. Right? But sometimes they don't have the chance to watch the whole thing. So you want to make sure that your campaign, if it does nothing else. It sends the video and reminds them to watch it or complete watching it. Alright, it can be as simple as that. Okay, so let's see Suzanne, I know you were here and we're interested in getting some help and working together. Let's talk about that. If you would like to. To come out, definitely let me know. Diane asks, I would like to connect these events with Facebook events. Which do I create first? So if you have. Okay, so if you have a following on Facebook and you would like to promote this. What I would do is actually create the Get Oiling link first, create the Get Oiling event first. Facebook is great for grabbing attention, but it's terrible for follow through because you don't own the attention of the people you're connected to. You rent it. Okay, when they opt into your email list and they say, yes, please send me things. Then you own the ability to send them stuff. Then you can send all of them something and know that they got it. So make sure that you are really putting your investment into this thing that's yours with Get Oiling. And then you can go out into the big pool, the big barbecue, however, you know, whatever metaphor you like for Facebook, put it out there so more people can find it. But don't rely on them for their infrastructure because you don't own the attention there. Okay, Carrie, I would like to get the guide from last week. That, go ahead and check your email, Carrie, that was sent out today and I will be sending it out again with the replay for this video. And we will, for this entire thing, like our Lead Generation Workshop, have this up in a class. In short time as well, so that you can actually go through this step by step. Okay. Paula, you're here. Hi. I thought you couldn't make it. Hey, I've just brought you out. You can chat if you'd like.
Hi, yeah, I'm driving right now.
Okay, be careful.
But I know I'm parked. I pulled over in a little town. So I really didn't see much of what you did there. I saw you were trying to get my video on there.
Yeah, yeah. So that's really the only thing that's missing for you. By the way, good job. Really, really, really good job. The only thing that you really have left to do Paula, if you haven't done this yet, is to make sure that you have that drip campaign for follow up. That includes a link, includes a link to the video replay page. And then you just want to make sure, of course, that you take that lovely video that you filmed. And, and you upload that to YouTube or Vimeo and so on, and then have that link in that replay page, which I did make one for you. So all you have to do is just go in and embed your, your video link once you get that uploaded.
Okay, okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Great job. I am impressed with the work you're doing. Do you have any questions for us while you're here?
Well, I really didn't see much of the video because I'm driving and I'm going in and out of the meeting.
Okay, well, the replay will be there available for you. I mean, really, honestly, Paula. The, the guide and the steps that we followed today, while I didn't release those last week in any way, you had already started doing those things. So you already created a landing page. I didn't want to dig all the way through your campaigns because you've got a lot of them. But basically you just need to connect a landing page and that. And that video playback page and you're golden. So.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you, you clearly know what you're doing.
And as soon as I get to a bigger town, then I'll watch the replay.
Okay, fabulous.
Thank you.
Take, take care Paula. Awesome. Always loved, love to see people putting the work in. Alright, Suzie, if you would like to come out and join us and work with us while we've still got some time, let us know. Send a note in the chat if anybody else here would like. Some assistance, some hands on help, some context and understanding how to get this done, definitely. Ask away. We're here. Suzie did say that she doesn't have the kids one because in the UK where she is, they don't have those products. Tell you what, just let me know, Suzie, would you like to come out and chat? Or you know, maybe talk about an alternate route to getting this done for you? It's up to you. Let me know. Just type in the chat. Because we do have the option to, you know, bring you out live, get into your account, all that kind of stuff. I know you were, you were doing some setup on this and we're here to help you. Okay, okay, I'm going to bring you out to talk. Because this is. There we go Suzanne. I've opened this up for you. If you'd like to come out and chat. Hello?
Hello.
Lovely to hear you. What time is it in the Channel Islands right now?
What time is it? It's 10 to six in the evening.
Lovely. Okay, it's not, not too crazy. Awesome. So you just, you mentioned you were having issues with the PDF file. So tell, tell me about that. Is that, is that what you wanted to upload into, into the email?
Yes, into the, I think it was the first email, wasn't it? It went out. There was the link to the event and then there's the link to the PDF. I just couldn't let me do it. So I just.
Okay. Okay, let me, alright, I'm going to.
Because it's more or less the same as a Word document, isn't it? It's just a PDF document.
Correct. Yeah, just a PDF is definitely the right thing that you want to use.
It just wouldn't, it just wouldn't let me do it.
Okay, so here's what we'll do. Let's see, actually, we'll go over to settings and your campaigns. What is the name of the campaign?
And it is, let me think, oils and emotions.
Okay. Okay, there it is. Perfect, okay, so what we want to do is, okay, here is a class worksheet in PDF file form. So let's see if you have any files, okay, so we don't have any files yet. So here's what you're going to do, um, so when you say, here's the class worksheet, just highlight the text where you want the file to go. Then we're going to go to Upload File right here.
I didn't do the highlighting bit.
It doesn't matter if, if you don't, it's fine, but it's a little easier to do it this way because then it'll show up where you want it to be.
Okay.
So I'm going to do this and actually, let me see, what was the name of the guide Evergreen? Okay, so I'm going to hit Drop File or Click and, uh, let's see, Evergreen Online Class is the name of the one that went out to you guys today, there's the PDF, Choose. And of course you're going to want to change this in your own account. All right, so now you see, and remember we hit Upload File here, okay? Or actually, yeah. So now, all we have to do is select this here and edit the link and change the name. So we can say, here is the guide and hit Update. Okay, and now that's there.
Okay, I'm not quite sure what I did then because it wasn't the, I didn't have my, um, a long link like you just had. It was just the, you know, when you have that little Word documents going down, just a little square with a dot you win? I just clicked on the little square with this, it's a PDFing.
Hmm, so okay. Here's a, another, another option, if you want to upload a file, here, I'll just do the same thing, Evergreen.
So I don't have to put it into Get Oiling first then, I can just go straight from my own account to get that.
Right, and well, actually when, when you do it this way, it does go straight into your Get Oiling account. So now actually here, let me show you, because now that we have that there, if I wanted to highlight another piece of text here and insert a file, it's there now.
Okay.
Yeah, so now, so everything that you upload like this will be there when you want to use it.
Okay. Okay, I'll give that another go.
Lovely, and, and really, yeah, it's, it's pretty simple, oh, go ahead Greg.
So yeah, one, uh, one quick tip there. If you're uploading the file and it says something like something went wrong, because that happens on occasion.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what happened.
Okay, then that usually means the file is too big because there's a file size limit on the upload, so people aren't uploading gigantic files. Now let me put this in the chat, you can grab this, but, um, for those listening, there's a website called smallpdf.com. You can upload your PDF to it and it'll like shrink it and then you can upload that file and that will work. I mean, which, that's actually good for your visitors too, because then if they're on a little mobile phone or something, it won't use up all their data, um, shrinking the PDF on the download, whatever. But, so I would, in your case, if it did come up with this, something went wrong, go to that link that I put in the chat. Whoops, actually I didn't, that public, let me, uh, let me do that again here so that everyone can see this link. But yeah, smallpdf.com has a PDF compression option that you can use. Yes, you go there and then I think there's, yeah, compressed PDF in the upper left-hand corner. Click on that and then drop your file, it'll shrink it and then you can take that one and upload it into Get Oiling.
Ah, fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, wonderful. Excited to see what's happening together.
By giving them that PDF, aren't we sort of like giving them the whole of the class before the class? Because in the, in the PDF from, um, Grow, it's like all the class information, isn't it? So isn't that not giving them too much before they actually attend the class?
It is technically, yes, but what we are, hmm, what's the best way to put this? So loo- looking at this from the perspective of internet marketing, which in this exercise, that's what we're doing. We are battling with incredibly short attention spans. We're, we're battling with, with toddler-length attention spans with, with the adults that we are trying to, um, you know, impress this information upon online. Uh, and so, um, what you may find as over-explained or redundant is actually really more of a net that helps to catch anything that might fall through the cracks. So they can get that PDF right away and they could be very happy with it, right? And they could want to take next steps right away. And maybe they want to attend the class so they can ask you questions. And then maybe they didn't, you know, really quite get all of the information and, and then the drip sequence, which is the same information as the class, right? Is just going to reinforce that. Where, where we're talking about introducing someone to a new concept, a new idea, a new way of being, living, buying, it's going to require more than just a single, um, introduction or explanation to reach that point. As I'm sure you probably have experienced in, in you yourself, I mean, I know you in particular are very well-versed in, in, you know, aromatherapy and like you know a lot of this stuff. But, um, but the vast majority of people that you're going to be interacting with are, are going to not know just of, you know, anything but a fraction of what you do. So, um, it feels redundant, but really what it is, is sort of a catchment for, uh, to, uh, it's, it's, it's a catchment to take into account the fact that people don't really pay full attention when they're on the internet.
Okay, fantastic, got it.
Yeah, awesome, well, thank you so much Suzie.
Thank you.
Fabulous, great questions and, uh, great work everybody today. Got any other questions before we get going?
Did you see Kathy's there or did you touch on that already?
Let me see.
She had a question, it says, is it okay to have an hour pre-recorded class that includes the closing too? Uh, she used a 20-minute Grow Workspace verbiage and then added her own, um, using that as a class or perhaps offer a shorter one too, or should they always be shorter 20 min, 20-minute classes? I mean, you were just talking a little bit about that, but yeah.
Yeah, so... There's no scientific answer to this. What I would say, especially if you've got a video that does a close, use a video that does the close, um, by all means. I mean, why, why not? Why not go ahead and, and go for it? In terms of length of time, a video needs to be to make an impact, there really is no perfect ideal one way or another. Some people really feel like they require a lot more information and engagement and others don't. Some people are incredibly irritated by long videos and some people feel like they need them. You never really know. But this is a person-to-person business and it requires your communication and we're not just leaning on the contents of this video for someone to make a decision. So, so long as the information is good and it points them in the right direction and you are present to help them take those next steps, uh, then it's going to work for you. Um, you know, this is an anecdote, but it's a personal one of mine. In my first network marketing company, I became a top recruiter. I became a top recruiter by sharing someone else's video. It was an hour and 45 minutes long and it was not a good quality video. So you don't really, you don't really have to have the perfect thing. You need to be perfectly present for the process and engage in those steps. Um, you know, that, that are listening and, you know, taking, taking those very important steps from people who have received information. So I would go with the one that you like best and err on the side of including everything that you need to include. All right, I already put a lot of time into creating it, need to redo my voice portion. Yeah, okay, yeah, do, do you, but remember it does not have to be perfect. You do not have to have Hollywood-level quality. Actually, to the contrary, being yourself and showing your flaws, especially in this business, it works in your favor because you're real and you're relatable and, uh, and people tend to like that a lot more than super high polish. Good questions, everybody. So I guess we're, we're good to go. Look in your email for this downloadable if you have not seen it yet. And in the near future, look for a full-on class that, you know, breaks this down. But for now, you've got these recordings, you've got the guides, your checklist. Send your event links to us, we want to see them, we want to see your funnels and we can give you feedback as well. So thank you guys for joining and we'll see you next week.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.